Good, so they're familiar with it. Good, good.
We will be very quick, so we can wait a few minutes.
So we'll do the finance first and then the water?
We will be very quick.
Yeah, because we don't have that on our agenda until 2:30. But yeah, I'd hate to get into the budget discussion without, you know, their being present or able to participate. But is, could we change the order of the agenda in terms of proceeding to like the approval of the minutes and then doing the election of officers when they're not here to object?
That's at the discretion of the chair.
I think we've set a public hearing at a specific time, so we'll probably have to do that, okay, hearing as close to 2 o'clock as possible.
All right, well, then I will go ahead and call the Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District Incorporated Board District Meetings. We are hoping to have two of our other members, Tom Toll and Carl Esping, be able to...
It does, certainly.
All right, then we will start with the approval of minutes. Item 3.1, approval of the May 3, 2021 minutes. Are there any additions, corrections? Secretary and Treasurer. Ms. Tasker very helpfully gave me a cheat sheet in terms of what we've done, Representative as the Secretary, as the Secretary. And, and the Martha had written, be President, you know, President, you know.
I'm satisfied with the recommendation.
You probably know more about water than I do.
I would comment that I appreciate, I think it was Mr. Brinkston that put together the cover memo, and I don't know that I've seen all of that in one place before, and that was...
Greatly appreciated.
Interesting.
Good, thank you.
See the history.
It was a privilege to present it.
Okay, I move we approve the election of officers as previously stated.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to accept the following slate of officers. Commissioner Davis, President, Mr. Toll, Vice President, Commissioner Ryan, Treasurer, and Mr. Esping, Secretary. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
We have Carl on now.
Oh, great. Congratulations, Mr. Esping. You've just been elected to the Board of Directors for next year. I don't know if he can hear me. I would too, I would too. Let's see what else we can, we can get done before he... Mr. Esping, are you there?
It doesn't look like his mic is connected.
Oh, so like he has...
Does he know sign language?
Yeah. Can you hear us, Carl?
Don't think he can.
Hang on, let's see here.
Something's trying to warm up.
Turn your volume up.
Okay, now...
Now he is.
Plug your speaker in, now he's got a mute.
He should be able to hear you.
Can you, can you hear us, Carl?
Whoop, he's talking.
Oh, we have to unmute him.
I pray he has to unmute himself.
How's that?
Hey, we can, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yep, doing real good. Talked to Tom, he's out and about, so he won't be joining us.
Okay, well, in the, in the, what we did prior to your arrival is that we did accept the following slate of officers for next year. Commissioner Davis as President, Tom Toll as Vice President, Commissioner Ryan as Treasurer, and you as Secretary. So congratulations. I hope, I hope that's agreeable to you.
I'll speak to my campaign chairman after a while.
All right, so let's go back and we will go to item 2.1, the public hearing of the 2021 amended budget and 2.1A, approval of the 2021 amended budget.
The 2021 budget is being amended due to the decision to prepay the three-year insurance policy in 2021 for $24.87. So that budget is being amended from $175,910 to $176,498.
And that's the only...
That's the only change.
That's the only change. Do we have a motion to approve the amended budget?
I move we approve the amended 2021 budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2021 amended budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Item 2.2, the public hearing of the 2022 budget.
Does the mayor need to close the public hearing?
Oh, thank you for catching that. Well, if I do, the public hearing is now closed, and we will begin the public hearing for the 2022 budget.
Thank you. Deputy PAC Director of Finance, sorry I didn't introduce myself before. The 2022 budget is being proposed as expenditures of $132,953. This includes the changes that were provided by the Water District for O&M and the A&E for the shares from the irrigators and the municipality. There haven't been any changes from what we've, what we discussed at our last meeting, so I would just offer that as the final proposed budget for 2022.
Any questions?
Nope. Just to repeat, you said there was no changes?
Not since...
At the last meeting?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I don't see any members from the, from the public, either in person or online. I should have asked for public input, but it doesn't look like we have anyone here to speak on this. So I'll bring it back to the, the Board for Action.
I move we approve the budget for 2022 as written.
Second.
And I guess I did it again. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll proceed with our, our vote to adopt the 2022 budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, so I think the only thing that we have left to discuss is the next meeting date.
No, I didn't pick a date. Do we have to do anything for budget?
Oh, and do, actually, should I have turned this over to Commissioner Davis since he's the newly elected chair?
You're doing, you're doing great.
Well, all we have to do is set a meeting, so I feel pretty good about that. Carl, do you have any, any sense of when would be a good time for you to meet? And when do we need to meet, like statutorily, next?
Statutorily, the requirements are that you meet at least once each quarter, so...
Okay, so that would be the, the third quarter, fourth quarter?
Before, what?
Before the end of September?
No, in the fourth quarter would be September through...
December.
When would be our third quarter meeting then? This is the second quarter meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, technically, we would need to meet in, at some time during the third quarter.
Which would be July, August, September?
Yes.
Yeah, we have effectively had two during the second quarter to get the budget taken care of, but we don't get credit for two.
Carl, are there harvest considerations to take into account?
The next two to three weeks is when action is going to be happening. So we're fine. Anytime in August is usually earlier. First week or two of August would be fine.
It'd be August 2 or August 9.
Just my suggestion.
I know I won't be in town the 9th, so the 2nd, I'm just one person, but 2nd would...
Actually, and I'm not going to be in town that, that week as well. So it sounds like we need to do the 2nd.
I'll be in on TV, but it's, but it's...
Do we need a motion for that?
I think...
I move that we set our next Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District meeting for August 2, 2021.
We have a motion and a second to set August 2, 2021 as our next meeting date. Would that meeting time be at 2 o'clock, or is it too early to say on that?
It's too early to say at this point.
Too early to say at this point, okay. So we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep everybody posted in terms of what the time's going to be on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Are there, is there any unfinished or other business that we have to discuss? Anything from you, Mr. Esping?
I think we're fine, thank you.
Okie dokie. All right.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
We, motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
We do have some documents for the five of you to sign for the budget.
Okay, cool. Martha, do you want your cheat sheet back? Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, welcome to the June 14th, 2021 Budget Study Session for our 2022 Budget. I will turn it over to Mr. Skrag or Ms. Pack, whoever's going to lead us through this today.
I'll kick it off and quickly turn it over to Debbie again, but this is next step in the budget process. We had some conversation last week about fund balances and American Rescue Plan, trying to get into a little more detail about not only the fund balances, but proposed allocations and creation of unbudgeted funds to better track some of those dedications of funds, as well as walk you through the American Rescue Plan, all with the intention of maybe trying to reach some consensus on use of those funds going forward. And then next week, one of our points of focus will be revenue estimates. If we can all kind of agree on the assumptions behind the revenue estimates, that thing gives staff a target to try to start balancing the budget to and bring that back to you at a future date. So Debbie's got a lot of good information here. We've poured over it as staff and look forward to walking you through it.
Thank you, Mike. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. So today, what we've tried to do is put probably more in here than we could ever cover because we want to make sure that we're utilizing all of our time as we go through these budget study sessions because we're with the July 15th deadline to report back to the county on the revenue neutral rate. We're trying to get as much information before you as we can in order to make those decisions. So if we don't get through this, it's not surprising to us. So we'll just continue it next Monday. So today, we're going to look over the CIP requests that we had for the 2022 budget. As Mike mentioned, the usage of some of the fund balance in excess of the targets, the American Rescue Plan funds, which we've gotten more detail on now, and the comprehensive fee schedule if we get to that point. So the first slide is really, we only had three major, three CIP requests this year. One was for a facility maintenance building for our facility maintenance crew, which is currently outgrowing their facility space. They are proposing to build a new space at a cost of about $455,000. A fire alerting system, which is an upgrade or a replacement of the alerting systems that we have at our current fire stations. That request is coming in at $495,000. And the relocation, and we've talked about this one, of Fire Station Number Four, our estimate for that at this point is $5 million. Mike added and wanted to keep in the back of our head is the Public Works Building. Because it runs along the river and the River Renewal Project may interfere, that's something we have to keep in the back of our mind as far as going forward, whether we're going to need to do something with that facility. I believe that's what Mike's intent was.
Yeah, if I could jump in there just a little bit. To Public Works' credit, I think part of that is kind of a recognition that times are tight, don't even ask, but if we're going to do proper planning, I want to keep those big-ticket items in our minds. And not necessarily so much the river project is just the footprint of that facility is pretty tight. And as they grow and expand or try to offer additional services, we've talked a long time about it, it'd be nice to have a different location. So 10 million's a ballpark estimate, that's a big-ticket item. Not saying that it's going to be in the future budget, other than, you know, my experience in other communities is if you get into that habit of just not even having aspirations, you don't plan for them and you never solve it. We need to keep it at least in the conversation.
Is that a good location?
That current location, ideally, we would either keep that location and dedicate it to one particular division to give them more space and then relocate. But if you look at the schools maintenance facility there on Broadway and the footprint of that and that type of facility, we could certainly justify something similar. In terms of location, the initial reaction is central makes the most sense, but it's hard to get property. We work our sanitation operation out of there. Or having them at the landfill might make more sense to finish their day and empty their trucks. And so we haven't spent a lot of time talking about siting other than just that it's a future need.
In terms of the facility maintenance building, is that something that we've got a site selected?
Well, we've had some conversations there as well. Parks has a handful of properties that we've just kind of catch-as-catch-can located them in. So we could take one of our existing facilities and try to upgrade it and improve the footprint. You know, you may not be familiar with it as we refer to it, but there's the Gold Storage Building by Kenwood Cove. We have about two-thirds of that, but that's a very small space, doesn't allow for a lot of circulation. We have a property at Stimel Road. Again, that's subject to flooding, but it's a property that we own. But I think we probably need to be a little open to all possibilities there.
Thank you.
Well, the Public's Work Building, I know that's a little ways off, but are you looking, I mean, with that 10 million, are you looking at one large facility that sort of encompasses everything? Or four buildings or?
Right. That cost estimate would be kind of a campus approach. You know, if we ended up dividing up the campus and the budget, not to say it couldn't be done a different way, but that's kind of where that number came from.
And then that lot across the street next to Bennett's stuff there, who owns that? Do we know? That's not the railroads or anything, is it?
No, I think Ben, if I'm thinking of the same one, I think Bennett's.
Maybe all the empty area there too then?
So, and you know, the other thing that we'll get into later in the study session presentation is kind of a debt planning. If we're going to take on a project like that, my grand vision for our finances is that we have a debt levy that's pretty constant. We're not jumping all over the place. And then we have a long-term debt plan where debt rolls off pretty consistently and we can take on projects. And we get a little bit more systematic and organized about tackling a project like this.
And that feeds into the second table here. This is something we presented in strategic planning. This is the bridge replacement. We had concern about critical infrastructure and how we're going to make sure that we're looking to the future for replacement of that. I just provided this as information so that as we go through, as Mike said, in the next couple of slides, we've done some different scenarios on our debt financing and how our capacity would be for our debt capacity. Jacob, if you want to flip to the next one, he's sleeping over there when he's supposed to be flipping my screen. So what we did, just a little bit of review. The timeline of financing for any project typically is is that we get approval for that project from city commission. It's typically in 2021, you might approve a project in 2022. And the year that that project begins, we typically temp note that because we don't have final costs and we don't have all that information. So as that project completes, that's usually a one-year temp note. If it completes in the second year, then we would typically issue bonds on that completed project in the second year. And the debt payments wouldn't be due, the first payment would not come due until the third year. So it gives us some ability to say, okay, we can go ahead and do this project knowing that we're not going to have that debt payment until the third year of that project. So we did two scenarios here. The first one is if we left the mill levy flat at the current mill levy rate, which is 6.803, and we assume that our assessed valuation was going to increase by 1% a year, how much would we have the capacity to debt finance each of those years? So if you look at like, for example, 2023 project year, and that's the year that the project would begin, and we have a capacity of, and what I tried to do is build in here these big projects that we're talking about, the bridge replacements, the fire station and some of those into the model to make sure that if, as we go forward planning, that we do have the capacity as well as, you know, we can then give us an idea of when to begin those things. So in this capacity, you can see, most years, we would have a little over 2 million and some we'd have 3 million. We could certainly meet the requirements of the bridge plan and the Fire Station One replacement plan and still maintain budget fund levels above our target at $800,000. There might be a year or two in there that we might go a little bit below, but not a huge amount below. But that establishes the future, that establishes the current mill levy rate that never changes and all that funding goes into that fund. Some years, we may have money in there. As you can see, sometimes our fund balance might grow to $2 million, but that's in anticipation of a big financing that we might be doing in the following or a couple of years down the road. On the next slide, the scenario that we ran was if we said that our current taxes that we generate for the debt service fund are a little over $6 million, what does that do for our capacity? It's certainly a little bit lower than what we have with the other scenario because it takes into account some growth. But we still have the capability to finance those larger projects in the years that we are anticipating those would need to go to be financed. So those are just kind of two approaches that we could take. And that could be, you know, some direction that you give us as far as this is kind of where we want to be. Certainly from a taxpayer's perspective, a flat mill rate is a flat mill rate, you know, and it's not going to change what I'm going to be paying every year. Whereas on the other side, for a flat tax, that's going to lower that mill rate in the future years because we assume we're going to have growth. So the revenue that we're going to collect off of that is going to create a lower mill rate for that. That either allows us to put that to the general fund, leave our mill rate the same, or lower in some cases, whatever commission would decide to do with that.
And Debbie and I have talked about this, but didn't really coordinate it and be part of this presentation. But that all starts to relate to that revenue-neutral approach that the state has recently enacted, where we have to make a deliberate decision if we want to do anything other than remain revenue-neutral. So the second scenario assumes that that tax revenue stays flat, which would be considered revenue-neutral. The first scenario would leave that mill rate the same, but if there's growth, would require ongoing public notice and process on the part of the governing body.
And you had mentioned, Mike, you had mentioned to me in a conversation that we'd gotten some evaluations for 2022 are going to be relatively flat.
Yes.
Okay, so we're not seeing a lot of growth in the valuations?
No.
Yeah, those just came in the last week and very, very flat.
Yep, okay. They're very flat.
Talking about property values?
Yes.
Yep. We kind of had the same reaction. We're still trying to track down the rest of that story. I'm not saying there's anything incorrect about that.
The market wouldn't say that.
Well, recognizing that is probably a legitimate question. Between now and when we talk revenue next week, our intention is try to get a little bit more of that backstory to get a better understanding.
I don't remember what that percent was, but was it .49%? Do you remember in those?
It was three tenths of a percent, I believe, of growth.
A few numbers since then, so.
I mean, from a revenue standpoint, with that particular number, we estimated that if we left the mill rate the same, it'd be a revenue increase of like $89,000.
Yeah, not a lot.
Don't spend it all in one place.
Right.
And if we have to pay for a notice up that we're increasing, we'd have to pay for that, right?
Just the letters that go out, we'd have to share the cost if anyone else was doing that. That cost would be split between whatever taxing entities were actually increasing their rate, higher than the revenue-neutral rate, correct. Are there any questions about those two debt scenarios before I move on to kind of some of the other information? Okay, so some of the other backside information that we've talked about before, but just reiterating the information so that we can remember kind of where we've been. During strategic planning, we had set aside some organizational priorities and brought those forward. Some of those included deferred expenses, agenda management software, updating the city website, a time and attendance system, a temporary grant coordinator position, a vehicle and equipment replacement plan and schedule, facilities audit. Fire Station Four was on that priority list. And then critical infrastructure, which we considered was bridges. Other operational considerations that we've been trying to think through as we go through this process is our economic development fund balance. We know we're using a majority of that in the current economic development project that we're supporting. Again, vehicles and equipment, the parks master plan, debt service reserve, if there's any necessary there, the fire alerting system, the building maintenance facility and the Public Works Building are all other operational considerations. And then we always have those outside, kind of, I wouldn't call it outside, but projects and initiatives that are out in the community that we're still keeping our eye on and wanting to do something with. The River Renewal Project, the Baseball Enterprises Project, the tennis project, housing infill, housing infrastructure, and then hotels, the hotel grants that have been brought forward in recent days.
And I should probably jump in on hotels. That's not something that staff's brought to you yet. Chamber of Commerce just kind of made an initial inquiry early on when we'd yet to know the American Rescue Plan numbers, but had offered up the possibility of financial assistance for hotels. And I think they had a per-dollar amount per room and estimated citywide about $3.5 million. And so haven't really, I kind of put that off knowing we need to get through the ARPA conversation and need to get through this conversation. If that's something we want to pursue, we can gather additional details and build a kind of a grant structure, whether it's for hotels or other requests.
Nope.
And you'll see kind of where that fits in as we start to talk about the American Rescue Fund. So then, the questions have become, so what possible available funds are there? So what we focused on really were the funds that we have capacity in and have the ability to spend anything that's above what our target is currently set at. So that leads us within the general fund about $4.2 million. In the sales tax capital fund, about $4.9 million. In special parks, about $415,000. Special gas, $1.1 million. And in the American Rescue Plan funds, the number that we were given that was set last week was $7,61,942.49. So we finally kind of have a number that we can work towards from the American Rescue Plan funding. And speaking of that, we also wanted to bring forward some information about the background because we keep getting questions about, can we spend it on that? Can we spend it on that? So we wanted to really give you that information, as much information as we had available, so that as we kind of look at these decisions and you kind of make decisions and kind of figure out where those numbers would fall in the eligibility of these funds. So as we know, the American Rescue Plan allocates amounts for cities less than $50,000 based on population. The money does go through the state, so the state's going to receive the money and then they allocate it to the city. The numbers were posted last week, giving the city of Saline an expected revenue of a little over $7 million. We'll receive payments in two different tranches. The first one will be sometime during the first week of July, first two weeks of July of 2021. And the remaining funds will be received in July of 2022. Something to remember that we have to keep our eye on as we kind of plan some of these longer-term projects is we must obligate or have a contractual commitment for those funds by December 31st of 2024. And we actually have to have And we actually have to have spent the funds by December 31st of 2026. So if we come in with a project that begins in 2025, we have to make sure that project is completed by 2026 in order to use those funds for that project. If we're using this as an eligible reason for that funding. The ineligible uses of the funds is to offset a reduction in that tax. So we can't say we're going to lower our taxes and use this money to make up that, that funding. It's pretty straightforward and it cannot be deposited into a pension fund. So those were pretty easy for us. A couple of the, my, I keep flipping the wrong pages. Did I skip one again?
Yeah, eligible uses.
See, I do that. Skip page 10. Eligible uses, there's four major categories of eligible uses. The first one is to actually respond to the public health emergency and its, and its negative economic impacts. B is for workers performing essential work, which is basically what they're calling a premium pay. C is for the provision of services to the extent of the reduction in revenue that a local government had due to the COVID health emergency. And D is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So as we look at the $7 million, we have to be able to justify its use under one of these four categories. I will caveat that by saying it, under, under category C, once we say we've lost that revenue and we're reimbursing ourselves for that revenue, then that funding is, can be used for whatever the, the city chooses to use it for. There's no more, we have to have that eligibility requirement because we've met that eligibility under, under item C.
And on item D, does that include other infrastructure like bridges, roads, anything like that?
No, it's very specific to water, sewer, broadband. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So now we can skip slide 11 because we already went over that one. So looking at eligible use, so in our, our minds, we wanted to look at eligible use number C, which would give us a lot of flexibility in how we actually use that. And then to see if we could qualify for any of those projects that we might want to use under eligible use D. So under C, and this one is, gets a little complicated. Basically what it says is that 2019 is our base year, whatever we collected in specific revenue, and they call it general revenue of the government. And that is defined in the census, in a Census Bureau online, you do, we do a kind of a census for the Census Bureau and they define what that general revenue is. So they take out certain things out of our revenue. For example, they don't include any utility revenue. Or if we had liquor stores, we couldn't include revenue for liquor, if we owned a liquor store. Or insurance trust revenues for, for like pensions and things like that. But for the rev, for the calculation of the revenue reduction, it says that we can take our three years, three-year average growth from 17, 18, and 19, and we can calculate that growth. And that's what we would have expected to get in 2020. And then we compare that to 2019 to see what that difference is. And so as you, as we look through these slides, and this next slide kind of gives you what that general revenue looks like. And like I said, it's not utility revenue, it's not liquor store revenue, which leaves us with the majority of the revenue we have. So what we did as, as a staff to calculate this is we took every revenue line item for the city in our budgeted funds, that's our general revenue. And we selected those ones that we felt were not eligible, so we took those out of the calculation. So we took out the utilities and we took out the bonds and, and things like that that weren't eligible. And then we came up with a total general revenue. On slide 14, we show that as, as in 2019 as $60,775,687. And what we need to remember is that these revenue increases over these three years include many things. So that includes the sales tax increase in 2017. It includes tax increases that we've done in property tax, our fee increases, any of those things. So what we, and so from that information, we calculated that our three-year average was 6.07% growth over that three-year 2017 to 2019 period. And assuming a 7.6 or 6.07% growth, we would have expected our 2020 revenue to be $64,462,340. We compared that to our actual revenue of 59, a little over 59 million, which left us with a lost revenue of five, a little over $5 million. As part of the guidelines for the reduction in revenue calculation, the, the government set a minimum amount that they would, that they, that you could use as that, as that calculation. So their, their minimum amount that we would be able to use for that is 4.1%. So if our, our rate didn't come in at over 4.1%, we could have still used 4.1%. They based that, I think, on inflation or something like that. They tried to make it simple, but they didn't always do that. But even if we used that minimum growth and didn't do any calculations, our lost revenue would still be about a little over $3.8 million just for 2020. Now, we're allowed to carry that calculation forward in 2021, 2022, and 2023 because we have until 2024 to use these funds. Obviously, we don't have that information yet, so we don't, we know what the rate should be. The 6.7% is not going to change. The base year is not going to change, 2019. So as we continue to get the, the revenue numbers in, we could certainly calculate what that lost revenue amount was and, and qualify that funding for those lost revenue years. So what I did on the, that bottom calculation was I took, if our, if our revenue comes in at what we budgeted in 2021, what would that lost revenue look like? And in 2021, the budgeted revenue was about almost $61 million. And we compared that to our base year of 60 million, or our expected revenue of $68 million. And that leaves us a lost revenue of about $7 million. So I think the story is that we will eventually have probably enough lost revenue to cover that entire $7 million. We may not have it this year because we don't know those numbers, but by the middle of next year, when we get the second tranche, which we won't get till the middle of next year, we would certainly have those numbers.
So we can buy, basically fall under LWC for, for the total amount of funds we'll receive?
According to our calculations, yes. And that's even if, if I believe, even if we use their minimum number of 4.10, and we don't even argue what all of those revenue codes are and anything like that, we could probably still qualify.
And we're talking about two years when there's additional out years beyond that.
Right, right.
So I think there's plenty of likelihood that we'd meet that number just on the lost revenue calculation alone.
Unless revenues just rebound very quickly, which we're not necessarily seeing at this point.
Right, and so, so if we do qualify under that basis under C, we can really use that, that funding any way we want. So I mean, that's the, the main point there is it really frees it up to be used on basically anything.
So there are some other qualifiers to this. You have to use it within the period of the, of the grant process. And as I mentioned earlier, that begins on March 3rd, 2021 and ends on December 31st, 2024. And we're not seeing that that's going to be a problem. The infrastructure eligibility use basically says that we can invest it in necessary improvements to our water and sewer infrastructure. And the way they simplified this, because people are going, well, what does that mean? So the way they, in their minds, simplified this was to say that anything that would qualify for an Environmental Protection Agency Clean Water State Revolving Loan or Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund bond or issue would qualify for this particular eligible use. So any of our projects that we're using state revolving loan funds for would qualify for this use as far as the utili, as far as the infrastructure was concerned.
And just as a clarification, as we're referring to infrastructure as part of this conversation, that's relative to the American Rescue Plan Act funding that is forthcoming. The conversation that's happening nationally about another round of stimulus funding for infrastructure may have a different set of rules. Hopefully, it would be broader. The conversations included roads and other forms of infrastructure. So don't know what to tell you in terms of timing, likelihood, dollar amount of any of that, but if you're following that conversation, that's another possible source of funding.
Correct. So then on slide 17, where I'm just taking, this is straight from what we, we provided last, last week. And these were the summary of kind of the proposed usages that, that staff came up with for your consideration in our budget initiatives. One was to transfer funds that hadn't been spent out of the sales tax fund into a parks maintenance fund, into a vehicle and equipment replacement fund, or to create a vehicle and equipment replacement fund, and to create a fleet management fund and transfer some of the unspent funding from vehicles and equipment into that fund. We did propose that we use the special gas tax fund for the EDA grant match. And then as we recognize net gains in the sales tax fund, that we increase the funding for Kenwood Cove. And then we also commit to some unspent, to spend some of the unspent funds in the streets, hike bike, and buildings and facilities, especially if we see growth that allows us to do that. So then we wanted to take a look and, and I'll kind of start talking here in a minute. We'll kind of start having some conversations because that was a lot of background information on, on kind of where we can spend it, where it is, what it is, and what, what our kind of initiatives have been. In the sales tax capital fund, we have available excess of target fund balance of about $4.9 million. As our initiatives indicated, we would take $970,000 of that, put it in the park maintenance fund, of which $600,000 was already kind of committed to the tennis project. We would take $1 million and put it in a fleet management fund. We would allow the spending of the streets deferred expenditures of $1.1 million. And we would allow the spend, spending of deferred expenditures in the buildings and facilities of 600,000. That would leave us about $1.2 million of fund, of fund balance over our target. And if we look a little bit forward and we say, okay, what's, what's that going to do to 2021? Because we're talking about 2020 numbers here, so we still have some effect of what, what's happening in 2021. When we budgeted 2021, we budgeted a net income in the sales tax revenue, capital fund of about $750,000. And that was based on revenue projections from 2019. However, we're seeing those projections go up. We saw 2021, 2020 be a little bit higher than 2019. So I made an adjustment for that to make sure that, to get to a 2020 actual for 2021. We take out the target fund balance and when that, that leaves us with about $2.9 million in that, in that fund beyond what we've already said these, these initiatives are. So as we know, that sales tax capital fund has a lot of commitments to it. And this is the spreadsheet that is kind of, we all dread to see, but it has so much information on it. It kind of tells the whole story of the sales tax capital fund. And, and this particular graph assumes that we hit 2020 revenues in 2021 and that we have a half a percent growth thereafter. It's accounted for all of the initiatives that I just mentioned. And as you can see, at the end of 2039, which is our last debt commitment, we still have about $1 million left in that fund. That takes into the account the commitments that we've already said we have for the river project, for the $12 million of construction there, the $1.5 million of final design, and the water rights. So as that fund is getting stronger, that kind of sets, sets a standard of kind of where we think we might be. But as we've been seeing on the next page, we've, we've been budgeting very conservatively at a half a percent because the sales tax numbers are pretty fluid. But if you look at the next graphic, in 2018, we had a growth of 1.63%. 2019, 1.98%. 2020, we had a half a percent, which is pretty good for COVID. And that's, that averages that 1.3% growth over the last three years. So if we took into consideration anything above 0.5, which is what we've been budgeting all along, we can see in that graphic on the right, if we assume that that growth was 0.75%, then the blue is what is our excess in that fund annually. So you can see we've grown, we'll grow up to about 400, or $300,000 annually in excess funding in that, just by having that growth changed to 0.75. If that growth is, is actually closer to that 1%, we're, we're looking at additional funding of about $700,000 by, by the time we get to 2036. So it's just exponentially growing. So the story, I think, that I, I want you to know is that I, I'm very comfortable with where we're at in that fund and what commitments we've made in that fund with taking the initiatives that we've had, that we've recommended in, in doing with these, this excess funding. And also, we should have the ability to utilize that excess growth for Kenwood Cove maintenance. We may be able to use that for transfers to the general fund for salary increases and to, and so that, kind of that property tax stabilization. So there's a lot of things that we could do with that, that increased funding as we see that growth happen. Now, obviously, we can't, we, we may not want to budget, and we may, but we may. You may be comfortable saying, okay, let's budget to 1% because we've, that's what we've seen. And we can certainly do that. But we have some opportunity to look at, how can we not necessarily commit to it, but kind of set it aside to use for things that we, we think are important later?
So if I could jump in for just a little bit, Debbie did a good job of covering that. It feels like we're maybe have, see some light at the end of the tunnel for a change. And you, I'm sure you recall the, the citizens, oh, why am I drawing a blank on the newsletter? But the, this line of citizen publication that kind of committed to the different initiatives that'd be funded by the sales tax. We've struggled for quite a while to kind of confirm that the, the revenue was there. And on top of that, we had a few projects that we debt financed beyond the life of that sales tax, which was a point of concern. And then as we talked about the river project and the availability of funds and some of those others, we've just spent a lot of time trying to confirm that, you know, everything was going to be there. Then you have COVID on top of that. So we, we spent a lot of time kind of trying to sort through those challenges. This approach, that, that million-dollar balance that Debbie mentioned, it resolves the, the debt financing beyond the term of, of the sales tax. It would leave us with a balance that could be drawn upon. This meets the commitments that, that we've identified as part of this line of citizen, that, that percentage allocation. The conversation was focused on establishing some fund balances, but I want to reassure those in the room and listeners at home that this isn't by shifting it away from a prior commitment. This is trying to, to just model what, what we have going forward. And then, you know, it may be a little too soon to, to promise that it can solve our salary problem, but it at least starts to look like we might be able to free up some revenue if we continue to see the, see some growth that we've not had available for us in the past to address pay plan challenges.
I did have one question in regard to the river project. In the last few years, it seems like we've gone from a $15 million projected commitment down to 12. And later in the presentation, I noticed that you had some, I think it was a half million dollars going back into the river. And in, you know, in, in terms of, of, of some of this funding, I mean, I know that we're doing our best to value engineer things, but I think we'd all agree that at a certain point of value engineering, we're not getting the product that we want and that we've pitched in this line of citizens. So I guess my question is, would there be, you know, what, what do we need to do to, to, to be able to fulfill the promise that we made in this line of citizen? I mean, do we need to restore the full $3 million? Is that something where, I mean, I've, I've heard that there have been some pretty difficult conversations about, you know, what's absolutely necessary at this point? And I didn't know if that might be a possibility to restore some of that funding.
Sure. Good question. And I want to, and I want to give Debbie and Martha free rein to correct me if I get off track here. But there's been conversation about what the funding, the original funding commitment was and where it stands. So you may recall, as part of a past budget conversation, we walked through that, that line of citizen funding commitment, how that math played out in terms of debt financing. I think part of the issue was a calcul, the commitment was that we would transfer our payments for the Kenwood Cove debt to the river project. I think part of that confusion was, was a, a lack of recognition that we had some years of Kenwood Cove debt after 2016 that had to be paid first. So we went back and confirmed what, if we did everything this line of citizens said, what that dollar amount would be. And, and we're still modeling to that dollar amount. So I, I, you know, I understand the, the confusion, but I don't want to leave on the table that funding's been taken away from the river project. I think there's been a clarification of what that number was. Now, having said that, we're, we are struggling with value engineering. We're continuing to have conversations with HDR, our designers, and the Corps of Engineers. We're continuing to have conversations with HDR, our designers, and the Corps of Engineers. Part of that, if you set aside COVID, if you set aside the cost increases associated with materials, I think part of that is, as you get a higher level of detail about scope and flood elevations and the mechanics of some of the bridge hydraulics, those type of things, they're kind of typical budget challenges you're going to face with the project. Then you add on top of that, the cost increases associated with COVID. And so we have a meeting yet this week where it's the next round of HDR trying to walk us through their design options and their cost estimates, as well as our options with the Corps of Engineers. We remain mindful that what was that vision that was communicated in this line of Citizen? I'm not prepared to say that we've had to concede anything as part of that vision just yet, but the numbers continue to be difficult. And just being completely honest, I don't have a sense, and I'm not sure our designers have a sense of material costs, construction costs. We've got to get through scope, initial budget estimate, Corps of Engineers funding, final design, then take it to bid. So I'm not even sure, timing wise, how that might sync up with the material challenges that are going on today. But that's a long way of saying, I'm not at all prepared to say that there aren't value engineering challenges. But I'm also, Debbie and Martha, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but we've at least gone back and verified the fundings there as initially described for the project. It's now a case of, can we get the scope we had in mind for the funds that we have available?
And I think what might be a little bit confusing from this particular spreadsheet is that it shows that there's $12 million committed to construction. But what it doesn't show is that there was $5 million already either spent or committed to design. And another almost million for water rights. So we're almost to $18 million in this plan, in this projection.
Gotcha.
Which is well within what we had originally, like Mike said, promised as far as the comparison of debt to, from Kenwood Cove to the river project.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Now, having said that, we're heavily dependent on our design consultants for what kind of scope of a project can we get for that budget? And those are the hard conversations we're having with them right now.
Thank you.
So this may be a good stopping point to see if you have questions or get your sense of whether we have consensus about setting aside the sales tax capital funds in unbudgeted reserve accounts as described. The intention there is really to make sure that deferred expenditures, those funds are being set aside for their original intended purposes and that we've segregated those balances. As you can see in that one table, three out of the four categories are deferred expenditures. The third, the fourth category is fleet management. While that may not be a deferred expenditure, we're trying to make the transition to the enterprise fleet model. And this is a way for us to take that annual allocation, set it aside, and we have fluctuations in the performance of the enterprise fleet model. We've got some reserve to draw on.
Would then most of the vehicles covered in the fleet leasing agreement be, would that be included in this list?
The, yeah, the fleet model, currently, we have, all of our vehicle and equipment is kind of together. We have large equipment, we have things that are beyond what enterprise can do. So we're funding the enterprise fleet vehicles as well as others. In this model, we'd set aside this balance, we'd continue the annual commitment of that dollar allocation. And so if on the fleet side, there's a cost, we could draw on this balance, which should then free up the annual allocation for non-fleet items. But we would continue that annual commitment towards vehicles and equipment.
So at this point, I was just trying to jot down some notes. You would like some guidance in terms of the debt scenarios that were presented on pages three and four, and then the sales tax revenue projections? Is that?
More so the sales tax revenue. The debt will be coming back to you project by project, but trying to give you a sense of the model we're trying to develop and manage to.
And I will add that fleet management, it is in a way a deferred because we've used what we had, as we had recognized as the unspent funding for vehicles and equipment through 2020, was about a little over $1 million. So we're kind of utilizing that to set up that fund. So we're not taking what wouldn't have been, what wasn't deferred in the first place, if that makes sense.
I mean, if you're looking for input now, I mean, I think I would probably, in terms of our sales tax projections, I guess I would still prefer to go more conservative. I mean, maybe go up to the 0.75 growth, but I would just hate for, what ideally, with the big projects that we've got listed, I'd rather budget that conservatively. And then if we have excess, maybe it'll give us some flexibility in terms of starting a new project early, or if we have something come up, you know, in terms of fire station number four, or the river, or the, you know, facilities, buildings that we're talking about, we would have some flexibility to react to that. That's just, that's just my opinion, and I don't know.
So you're saying you're at the 0.75?
Yeah, I'm saying either 0.5 or 0.75 projected growth.
I'm comfortable with the 0.75.
Yeah.
Quick question on page 19, is that the, are those the numbers that we've been looking at all along? Because I was trying to remember if on the far right column, if that's always?
That's always shown as a positive. So this is, or is this an updated?
It is updated through the end of 2020 with its actuals and with the budgeted numbers for 2021.
Okay.
Back to the, so I adjusted it for that 2020 additional revenue we expect to come in. We also took out all of these initiatives.
Okay. Because this looks better than what?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was going, don't remember.
Well, our beginning fund balance was about 1.2 million when we, on the older one, older version, so.
Right. So, okay. I wanted to verify that that was correct.
Yes.
I made a note, but I can't find it. The deferred expenditures for streets are which projects, what type of projects?
I'm sorry, which what?
The deferred expenditures under streets for the, under sales tax capital fund?
Right.
The third one?
Right.
Or fourth one? What type of projects were those again?
Typically, sales tax pays for mill and inlay. It pays for some of the normal crack seal, and they have a whole section of category that's spent out of sales tax under the sub-CIP. So those would be those projects that either?
Projects that we had scheduled for last year, which?
And we probably paid them out of gas tax, some of them.
And a lot of them were just not done last year because we didn't?
Right, yeah. We went into COVID, we pulled that back. I don't know that we can tell you location by location as much as, we just didn't fund 2020 street, annual street program for staff schedule and bring back?
Things that would have been done last year, which we decided?
Yeah, I don't think that 1.1 includes?
Or we spent them out of gas tax.
Is that 1.1 all 2020 money? I think that, some of that money goes back. So maybe we had a program that wasn't as much two years ago, so we've added that money into that 1.1 million.
That's over the last four years.
Yeah, it's not all just 2020 money.
Correct.
So that represents deferrals from the last four years, then?
Or under budgets?
Hypothetically, budget was a million, and we spent 900,000. So we left 100,000 on the table.
I mean, we did the projects that we had planned to do. Maybe they came in cheaper than what we thought they would.
Right.
And rather than redirecting it, we just held it back.
Correct. Thank you. That's correct.
Would this, how close would this get us to completing all of our deferred projects? Just for streets? Are there any more street projects that were deferred other than what this?
No, I think we've scheduled everything that was deferred. It would just allow us to keep with our regular maintenance program as we move forward.
Right. So this would catch us up to where we should be?
Should.
Well, this would set up a fund, which would then be dedicated to street work. So over time, the Public Works Department could spend that balance down. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we're prepared to, with 1.1 million dollars with the projects above and beyond the annual budget yet this calendar year. And we, what we're saying is?
I mean, each year has new projects. But how much do we have in arrears that we've?
From a budget standpoint, it's that 1.1. We didn't max out the budget every year. I don't know that we can tell you this street was scheduled for 2019 and didn't happen as more a case of the full annual allocation wasn't spent. If we set this aside as a dedicated reserve balance, then the Public Works Department knows, as they plan budgets going forward, they have their annual allocation as well as this balance. If it's not dedicated, we end up having this more nebulous conversation about, do you want to spend it on streets? Do you want to spend it on building maintenance? Do you want to spend it on parks? By doing this, we're saying, we're going to dedicate it for these allocated purposes, and then staff can manage our budgeting going forward on that basis.
I guess where I'm trying, I'm trying to get more to parks. Just trying to figure out how much of the streets need, can any of this be, get, streets or parks needs more? Which one has the bigger need right now?
Boy, that's a good question. What we do know is?
Your question is, can we take part of that 1.1 million and put it to parks? That's a question.
And we certainly can. I mean, we have the ability to do that. That 1.1 is based on the, that, what we said we were going to spend on streets over time, that dollar amount, I don't even remember what it is off the top of my head. That's what we had allocated. So that's the money annually that we didn't spend. So we could shift it to parks, we could shift it to anything. We don't have to spend any of this as it's allocated on the slide. So we, you know, if you wanted to take it away from streets and spend it on parks, we could certainly do that.
And if it's helpful, the one thing I would tell you is, you know, we've budgeted conservatively, our actual performance has been fairly conservative, and we have struggled for years to meet those original obligations that were promised. And so we're kind of transitioning from a conversation about reprioritizing to, in the next couple of years, we're hopeful that we can meet our baseline commitments and then have some additional funds so that you have some discretion going forward.
That's actually kind of where I was going. And when you look at what folks in town say is high priority, it's our parks. I mean, not the streets aren't.
Right.
But if this is an opportunity to start shifting our budget money towards our priorities, I'm just trying to steer a little more towards?
We've got $500,000 a year as an annual allocation for parks. There's the 970 in the deferred expenditures that's identified. This funds, or the tennis project, this funds, and we'll get into the details of the baseball project, but it funds the baseball project. And so at that point, you know, there's 600,000 towards tennis, 870,000 towards parks, and 4 million towards baseball.
So all I can see is that real long list of things in parks that still?
Sure.
Well, I was going to call it undone and unfunded, but I think that's probably correct.
Right. Because, and that was what, 5.9 million in?
Close to 6 million.
Yes, close to 6 million. And I, at $500,000 a year, I just don't see us ever making much progress.
And in all honesty, I'm not sure about the accuracy of that 6 million number. I mean, everything I just described, it'd be 1.5, 5.5. Just with the funds as we've described them, there's 5.5 million, and that's just some parks, maintenance, tennis, and baseball. So I guess all I know to tell you is, the prior commitment was $500,000 a year towards parks. We're trying to honor that commitment as well as then tackle initiatives that have been brought to us. And I think?
Which one of these weeks do I try to get that 500,000 up to a million?
Well, this would not allow you to do that.
This would have to be the week.
But this is excess. I mean, this is the fund balance. So if you wanted to do a one-time thing?
That's true, yeah.
We could certainly do that. We are still scheduled to spend the regular $3.2 million on streets next year that we have allocated into the future. So this is one-time kind of money that could be shifted. I mean, that's a possibility.
Or at least, you know, knock off one of our big ticket items on parks.
Jerry Ivey?
Well, Jerry Ivey or Indian Rock?
Indian Rock.
Right. Or I just look at all of those, those smaller deferred maintenance expenses that you could just, you could literally knock a lot of those, so many items off that, off that list, and really improve the functionality and the aesthetics and just, you know, the general upkeep of parks that are so heavily used. I mean, there's a lot of different ways you can go with that, but I really like the idea of shifting that 1.1 to parks to try to at least make some inroads on those, that deferred?
We're kind of revisiting the strategic planning discussion. I mean, it's within your discretion, within the limits of the ballot language that authorized the sales tax, and within the guidance, if you want to call it that, that was the marketing language in the line of Citizen. And, you know, as part of that strategic planning conversation, we also had a conversation about the street maintenance cycle and the assumptions going into that. So it's, it's certainly discretionary on your part as a governing body.
How did it address parks? I don't have that in front of me, the newsletter that talked about how we were funded out of this sales tax fund? What did it show?
Just a $500,000 increase, I think.
Give me a second.
I don't know if it had a specific dollar amount.
It just said, I can't remember.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I left, that's my other briefcase.
I just see that list on parks, one of those things that's going to keep, well, that always keep growing because you always have ongoing maintenance. But at 500,000 a year?
It's going to take you 12 years, and then what you, the first year is going to be, need to be redone.
But we haven't been, but we haven't been spending the 500,000. I mean?
No.
We have, how much sitting in that balance?
It has 970,000.
I thought it had more, yeah.
A lot of that's already allocated.
Some of it is, but I'm saying, on an annual basis, we're not even spending the 500,000, are we?
We haven't been because we were going through the Parks Master Plan and trying to get that prioritized. So the direction to the parks staff has been, let's wait till we get that all in order. And then, once we get that in order, we can go, basically. So it's not at any, because we didn't want to, it's just we were trying to get that order and that priority set.
Yeah. Do it thoughtfully.
Right.
Right.
Well, I guess I'm okay with a one-time half a million shift. I really do think we need to do something in addition to what we've been doing to tackle that parks.
The problem is, we have some large dollar items, such as those, the restrooms and stuff, you know, at the parks. And that's, that'll blow through your 500,000 pretty quickly.
That's all right. I mean?
But I mean, that's what we maybe need to look at.
I mean, wherever we spend, I mean, if we have an opportunity to take care of one of those big items, you know, which would not be a recurring expense, obviously, I'd hope it'd be 30 years before we have to do them again. Right, because they are in need of repair.
The restrooms in all the parks.
In all the parks.
Yeah. So do we have consensus on doing that, I guess?
So, yeah. And at what amount?
Well, I first started looking at this, I kind of wanted to get down the road and see where we were in the next budget cycle. But I'm amenable to a one-time shift, as Dr. Davis, you and the mayor are suggesting. I don't know that I want to go the whole million, but million one, but half of that, half is good.
I could live with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
In answer to your line of Citizen question, there's a lot of discussion in it about the river project and specific dollar amounts. As it relates to parks, it's more of a pie chart of percentage allocation of the available funds. So I think we backed into that 500,000 number based?
I could not remember.
Percentage.
Thanks.
So, I'm sorry, I was multitasking, but the dollar amount to redirect was?
550,000 would that be?
Your math's better than mine's. I was going up to 650, but yeah, yeah, I think you're right.
Okay. So with that revision? Okay, so with that revision, is the rest of that proposed allocation acceptable?
Uh, it is for me.
Okay.
Here we now, page 111.
Yep.
Did I hear, or do we want to discuss the revenue projections? I thought I heard you kind of talking about the .75 as our growth projection when we do our budgeting.
Yeah, I thought that was conservative.
Or do we want to stay as conservative as .5?
Acceptable.
Because that'll certainly help us for our discussion next week.
Did we kick a couple-
I, I talked to Mr. Skragg about this the other day, coming out of COVID. I'm not sure how we do that, because, I mean, I look at the car lots. Of course, this is for 2022, 2021, we're low, so some big ticket items, we're not going to see that sales tax. We could see that recovery in 2022 because, you know, the chips come in, we, chips may fall or they may. I was kind of a little joking. So anyway, I, I would say .75 at the most. I mean, I, I have no troubles with .50, and then hopefully having something above that. It's always easier to say we have more funds than what we had budgeted than less, so.
Having a fund balance helps absorb if we, you know, overestimate if it's not too much. We've not had that luxury for a long, long time, but, and that's one thing in the back of my mind, is if we say .75 and it comes in at .6, we do have some-
Just from planning, for the jobs that we anticipate coming, do you really see any benefit from our budget for that before '23? I mean, is, you know, the new economic growth?
I think they start up in 2022, don't, well, I don't know. Kabota doesn't.
We are seeing some pretty good growth right now, and we're attributing it to construction. People are in town for construction, and the, the retail numbers are just really-
That's where I struggle a bit, is splitting out construction and stimulus and figuring out, you know, if, if we didn't have COVID and stimulus, we kind of went into this expecting that construction jobs would, would see-
And that's where I was at also, talking to Mr. Skragg, is that we had that stimulus money, and a lot of that hit the first portion of 2021 here that we're not going to see again, probably, you know, and that was at, what, $1,200 per person for those that qualified. So you saw a lot of families getting five, six, $7,000 to spend that they're not going to have in 2022.
Right.
So.
So would you feel more comfortable with staying at the .5? I mean, I-
At least for, I kind of would for another year, not, just because we've had so many abnormalities with COVID and stimulus and things that, you know, I, I think it would be beneficial.
And we don't necessarily have to lock in. Part of what we'll do next week is walk you through the, the sales tax performance. I mean, Debbie provided you a historical average on the sales tax fund side, but we can, you know, build a base-
And I know we're starting to see some of those funds from, from sales that are done on the internet, but that's just not a large number yet, though, right?
Correct. The dollar amount's not very large. And I will say, that projection, while we have this fund to kind of absorb whatever projections, we also have the general fund that we depend on sales tax to, to make a projection. So I think we want to be consistent whichever way we go, to make sure that we're consistent in both funding sources. So .5 for now.
Point five.
Point five.
I agree.
Okay. So the next information that we'll talk about is transient guest tax, and this is information we provided before, the indication that the, the scenarios that we've projected here are to set the, the transient guest tax at 7.75%. We had, what we had provided before were averages over the last three years through 2019. I also added in here scenarios if we concluded 2020, which was very low, and if we only did 2020. So we're thinking 2020 is a worst-case scenario. It's got to get better. I did, I did do a little research in the American Hotel and Lodging Association's Hotel Industry Report, and they're reporting that while we're seeing some increases, they don't, they don't expect to get full recovery until 2024. The numbers that we see on the, the next slide on '22 with, these are our actual collections. Our last distribution was April, but that was collections through February of 2021. So we're not, we're still, we were still in COVID then. We hadn't released a lot of mask mandates. It was prior to spring break. So I think we're seeing a little bit better than what we did the worst case last year, but we're still below, April last year was before COVID, so we, it really wasn't a good comparative. When we get our July numbers, I think that'll be a little bit better to tell us kind of what that growth is certain to look like for 2021. So this one's a little bit of a, again, we, we don't know really what it'll, where it'll fall, but back on slide 21, we talked about for baseball, that we thought that transient guest tax would support about $2.5 million of debt over 10 years, depending on how quickly that transient guest tax rebounds and how quickly we actually fund that project. As you recall, when we fund, it's like two or three years down the road before we actually have debt, debt service payments. And another obstacle we have to look at besides the collection is that if we want to fund this with debt, with bond, with general obligation bonds, we do have a charter ordinance that limits our bonding ability to $1 million a year for public park improvements. That can be changed. We can always go back and change that. We have options to debt finance internally. So we do have some options to get this project going, and, but ultimately, it's a, a policy decision as to whether you're comfortable with committing that portion to $2.5 million financing for that project. And I don't know if you want to address that specifically now, or wait till we get to the next section that we're proposing.
If you read ahead, you see that there's also a $1.5 million placeholder for, for baseball, so you put these two together, and that hits the $4 million target number. But I think the question, the discussion point at the moment is just, you can see there that in 2019, we were at about $296,000 of revenue, and to finance 2.5 million over a 10-year term at 3%, that's about the same, it's almost a one-for-one there. So if we can get back to 2019 numbers, that supports the 2.5. If we can get lower interest rates, that, that helps a little bit. So I think we're, you know, in, in the right range. We, it's really a question of the, the COVID recovery and its impacts.
Yeah, when it comes to baseball, softball, and I don't know how we, if we put this back on the agenda here in the next few weeks, but with, because of being a year and a half out from when we initially addressed this, I'm not sure, 4 million's still that number. I, I have personally a, a thought process that we really need to address Bill Burke fairly quickly. Not only because of the facility conditions, the restrooms, that type of thing. And I, I got to thinking, I don't know if we want to take this in two different chunks, and one of them being Bill Burke, and then if we do look to do the premier diamond at East Crawford, that's something different, because the East Crawford, they, you know, the baseball enterprises took those funds and moved those fields to, to, to South High. So, and, and I'm concerned about the timing, you know? We can't be doing construction at Bill Burke during the summer, because that's when those fields are being used. So I'm not sure, even if we started addressing baseball, softball at Bill Burke next week, do we still get those fields playable for next spring? And so if we don't do, look at that fairly quickly, we're out another year to, to having those facilities up and running.
So if there's some issues with scope, we can deal with that if we get the money teed up now.
Yeah, yes, if, if we can, you know, I, I know it's been through a lot of twists and turns over the years in terms of how we first financed it, then COVID, and then we thought we had transient guest tax, then COVID hit, then understandably, you as a governing body had concerns about the term of the lending, and then we backed off the, the transient guest tax rate a little bit, and so it's been quite a moving target. But in answer to your question, if we can reach some general consensus that, yes, you know, we've got to get through the protest period for the transient guest tax, but we're going forward on the transient guest tax, and, and amongst all the other competing priorities for funding, we're committed to X number of dollars for, for baseball on top of the transient guest tax, then, then, yes, we can start prioritizing projects and, and, and start working the scope. You know, part of the strategic-
The commission will find a consensus about that, and then that's going to free staff to work on the scope issues with different-
Yeah, and I, and I think there's some dollars out there you could put towards us, and, and I could see us trying not to fund 2.5 million. Now, that may be a, I don't know what the scope is, it's been so long at, at Bill Burke.
Yeah.
You know, that may be a 1.5 to $2 million scope. Let's say it's a 2 million, we may come up with other dollars that we only need to, to debt service a million or a million and a half. That would be my, my preference, so.
So what I'm hearing is, we need to take another, we need to review the scope because it has been so long. And I guess my other question is, is baseball enterprises fundraising, is, is that complete, or are there still some funds to come in from them, you know, in light of the fact that the, the softball fields were done at Salinas South? I mean, where, where, where do we stand on, on that?
I can't speak for baseball enterprises. My focus has been trying to get to a decision point on finances, recognizing that we then have to pick the conversation back up with baseball enterprises.
Yeah, I, I'm just going to give you my opinion from conversations I've had, and I think Bill Burke is kind of our, is ours to do.
Sure.
And I think we kind of felt a little bit that way when we initially started, so.
And, you know, if, if some of that park money goes towards the restroom, that's less money that has to be taken from another source, because that, that has to be part of that Bill Burke project.
Oh, yes, please.
Yeah.
So I, I think this is helpful. If, as, as a next discussion point, we get direction on that, that 1.5 number, or whatever that turns out to be, to, to baseball, that certainly is a starting point, and we can know that we might have to adjust the, the amount to be financed by way of transit guest tax, but we're in the three and a half, four million dollar range. That gives us some latitude to staff to get started working on scope and costing the project and, and costing out the project, and then we can come back and say, here's what we comfortably think we can get. And, you know, we've talked about, in strategic planning, we've talked about the bathrooms, we've talked about trying to solve drainage and rainout issues and turf infields, and, and there's, those type of improvements will make a noticeable improvement on the facility.
As, as we, you know, as we look at our pull factor, and, and, you know, we look at the transient guest tax and stuff, I, I know Bill Burke was fairly busy this weekend, and I notice it's been that way even with, with what we have, and I just think that, that that's where, right now, we need to put our focus, and I think that'll help our, our transient guest tax and our hotel years the way it is, and, and also take care of our scheduling for rainouts and those type of things. So, and I, I know, and I need, we need to review that, because I know at one point we were talking about just doing infields at Bill Burke, or, you know, do we want two, I'll call them premier diamonds that are completely turfed, because you can collect gate there. 4A was held there instead of at South High, because you can't collect gate and stuff like that. So there may be some benefits to fully turfing two diamonds and having four or six diamonds that are just partially turfed, too. So I think we need to have those discussions again with parks and recs, so.
The other thing I would tell you is, more, now more than ever, we struggled to hire part-time staff to, one of the duties is dragging and lining the ball field. So, you know, baseball enterprises advocated all along that there's efficiencies to be gained, and never disagreed with that, but now we're to the point that we struggle just to get the staff to drag and line the fields, and that's a hindrance for leagues on a daily basis out there, or could be anyway.
But I think we can at least address this and not, and with, with the additional transient guest tax, I think we can fund what we need to do here, and that's without running the numbers. I'm just, as I say, spitballing a little bit here, but I think we do have that ability. And then we can look at that next phase if we want, if we move to that, and, and not put as much, because I think that would be a lot to put on staff all at once, staff to try to do Bill Burke and, you know, do East Crawford at the same time. So I think this could be beneficial, so.
Yeah, I would tell you, one priority item at, at East Crawford is trying to deal with the runoff coming off that runway. You know, we, I think I've had individual conversations with all of you. I don't, can't explain the, the thinking of budding those fields right up against the edge of concrete, but we do need to get that drainage under control. I think that, that's helpful. That gives us a starting point, and we'll touch, just need to confirm with you the allocation later in the study session presentation as well.
So the next two funds that we kind of look at, and these are pretty straightforward, just the special parks fund with available funds of about 415,000. The list that's included here is those items that were identified through the tennis project initiative. Certainly, some of these are directly related to that project, and some of them are kind of ancillary to that project. I did note, too, that we did budget out of this fund $250,000 for mower replacements in 2021, because we were so in need of that, those replacements. We normally budget out of this fund for playground equipment, and it takes every bit of what we have in revenue to replace those playgrounds on an, on an annual basis and on a consistent plan. The other one here is special gas fund, available is about $1.1 million. We have committed 900, 900,000 of that, so there's not a lot of remaining funds in that balance there. I don't know if we want to talk about the, the tennis project detail items, or if we just want to bring that back later, Mike?
Yeah, I guess if you have feedback, that would be helpful. As Debbie said, we can, we can support all that as described there, and then I think we just need to know going forward that special park fund is, is going to be committed to trying to do two playgrounds a year and, and forever. The number of playgrounds we have, the, the lifespan of a playground, the cost of it, we're, we're, probably will fall behind just a little bit, but if we dedicate this fund to park for playground equipment, we can come pretty cool.
I know Kenwood Pool Demo, you know, we, we have to do because of the tennis. Why do, why do we feel like we have to demo the Oakdale Pool?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd rather that 70, I mean, it sits there, I don't see where it's bothering anything. I'd rather that 77,000 at this point went to something that we had to do some maintenance.
And I may personally take responsibility for that one. I was just trying to clean up and get our house in order.
Can that be filled in, frankly?
Yeah.
Is that, is that completely taking out all the concrete, or is that just filling it in?
Well, I know Arts and Humanities has some interest in retaining some of that concrete strategically for the River Festival and, and other uses, and we haven't got to that level of detail, but this was kind of a preliminary estimate. As it relates to the courts, and I think we talked about this before, but my thinking was if we just leave those courts there, then we have the remaining expectation that they should be pickleball courts or handball courts, or, you know, we're, we're, we're leaving those because of the shape they're in, and they're not able to be reconditioned. I just don't want to create a community expectation that it's an asset that we need to maintain and improve. The, the Oakdale Pool, it sat there that way for a long, long time.
And if we don't have any, I was going to say concrete plan, but bad choice of words, but if there's no, if there's no real plan for, I mean, it is a big usable space.
Well, and-
Well, there is certainly interest in turning it into turf and the opportunity to redevelop, but I've kind of beaten back Arts and Humanities and their creative juices until we figure out whether we're going forward with this.
And I, I have some ideas what could be done with it, but it's, that would not be as urgent an issue as certainly, as the reasoning that you just gave for the tennis court.
Yeah, maybe I'm being overly frank, but we just, we've had a handful of things that we've walked away from as a community, and just left sit, the old pool being one of them, and so I was just trying to wipe the slate clean and, and get our house in order.
I will say this, I see people using that for a variety of, of things when, when I walk at Oakdale, especially in, in the summer months, a lot of times there's, you know, people that, that have kids running around playing there, you know, the occasional skateboard, which I know is not a good use for that, but that, that pool, and I don't know whether it's because of its size or its location, or the, the art commission that's, that's on, on, you know, that, that it's painted with. or the, the art commission that's on, you know, that it's painted with. It's, it seems to draw people there. And I see people, you know, gathering around there and using it. So I, I think that we could find a better use for $77,000 within the park system until we have, as Commissioner Davis said, a concrete plan. That's mine.
Sounds like consensus to me.
Yeah, I agree. It's an interesting space.
And I guess, any demo that would be done on tennis courts, I mean, that's going to be a tremendous, to me, it would seem that would really open it up for the festival and for car shows, et cetera, there. But you'd have to work out timing, I guess, on that a little bit in terms of getting new turf or new grass planted and if you don't have a mud pit for a.
Yeah, we've also talked about the electricity and making sure that we keep what we need there to make it available. So I think the thinking there is maybe a smaller footprint, but keeping some of that for the things that you described as well as River Festival. But yeah, we worked through the timing of seeding it and getting the turf established. And so proceed, but keep the Oakdale Pool. Okay?
Keep the pool.
Keep the pool.
Is there any chance to respond?
You and I can talk offline. I think there's alternatives, but what I'm hearing is you want more of a plan before we make that commitment.
So the next fund is the general fund, and that has about $4.2 million of available funding over the target balance. We are bringing a recommendation for your consensus to increase the general fund target fund balance to $10 million. That puts us more in the 20% range, and it gives us a little bit more cushion. So we're proposing that we take 1.5 million of that and leave it there and raise the target fund balance to 10 million. The following list is, are things that we've been, we've been recommending, the agenda software, the website, time and attendance, the grant coordinator. We are recommending that we set aside a million dollars just as cushion for any pay plan implementation. We're recommending a facility audit on all of the city's facilities. And then we have a recommendation in here to replenish the economic development fund because with the program, with the Swans project, that is going to deplete that fund pretty low, which leaves about $670,000 out of the $4.2 million from the general fund excess fund balance. So if we want to discuss those, that's probably about all we'll have time to discuss today.
And there's, you know, two and a half million of that is setting funds aside for the general fund and then the pay plan. And I should say that the million dollars for the pay plan is a placeholder. There's not a lot of detailed math behind that until we get into the pay plan and.
A million dollars is not what it used to be.
Yeah, you're definitely right about that. And as we discussed previously, that combined with that general fund balance might be a way for us to glide into revenue growth to support the pay plan.
Does that money get put in a separate account as far as you're doing your budget every year, or is it?
Well, we've talked about, quite a bit about unbudgeted reserve funds, so trying to be more dedicated about separate allocations for the purposes of accounting for that separately.
Probably for the pay plan, it would stay in that fund balance because it's not really a legitimate capital improvement fund. But it's probably pretty short term, too, because we do have the pay plan going on or we're starting that plan pretty quickly.
So when you put that million dollars, you, you're just putting that, I know, as a placeholder, but are you looking at that as a one-time adjustment? Tell me kind of how you came up with that.
Well, and the last time we did a pay plan, which was about 2006, the, the estimate was, for the cost increase was about a million dollars. And then that estimate was low, and so we found ourselves having to try to find a way to catch up. So my thinking with a million is we still need to budget for the pay plan, but if we're off, then it's a balance to be drawn upon while we try to kind of refine our salary calculations and budgeting and hopefully have revenue growth going forward to make up that gap. So kind of a balance to be drawn upon if the pay plan actual numbers exceed budget.
What does the facility audit encompass?
Do you want to touch that one, Jacob?
Yeah, so they'll just take a look at all of our facilities and make recommendations as far as our HVAC units, windows, energy efficiencies, those sorts of things. And then, so that audit, we'll come back with a larger kind of capital improvement plan that we'll have to look at as we go. And we have over 100 HVAC units that are coming near the end of their usable life. I mean, there's just a lot of deferred maintenance on our facilities that, we look at the parks and we look at the other things, but facilities is something that we kind of haven't really looked at. So we're going to try to get somebody on board to take a more in-depth look at what we have outstanding on those facilities.
I'm drawing a quick brain freeze here. Where is the EcoDevo Fund money coming from right now?
Out of the sales tax.
That's what I thought. So this would be above and beyond what comes in annually.
Right. Well, if you recall, our annual amount that comes in from the sales tax, by the time we pay the EDO and SDI and some of those ongoing allocations, it's about a one-for-one right now. And so we aren't able to accumulate much of an additional balance.
So this won't help it on a yearly basis. It's truly a one-time.
Right, this is a cash infusion.
Yep. Well, and depending on what the facility audit shows, I mean, we, we might want to be kind of conservative budgeting that sales tax. All of a sudden, I'm thinking of, you know, industrial air conditioning units and, yeah, new roofs and things like that.
Right.
Was there something done with Johnson Controls?
There was, yep. At the law enforcement center, they came in and with upgrades and efficiencies, they said that our savings could pay for some of the improvements that were made there. And some, some of these facility audit firms, you know, specialize in that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, they assist with the capital improvement planning, and they have programs that, some of them actually even guarantee the energy savings and kind of set that to try and offset the cost. So I think with Johnson Controls and the last project we did, we kind of did the project and we didn't do anything forward, and it wasn't a long-term contract, so they didn't monitor it ongoing. Anything that we did in the future, we'd probably include some ongoing monitoring so that we can actually see what the savings are and go from there. So there's lots of programs out there, lots of firms that do it. We'll just have to see what we get. I'm working on the RFP right now, so hopefully in the next two or three months, we'll have somebody selected and move forward with that process.
And once this money goes to the EcoDevo Fund, that's a one-way cash disbursement.
Well, it's still our funds at our discretion, but it's at least identified as being available for that purpose.
So, so that would be like the, which one is it? The pay plan information, implementation? So it's still in the general fund, so if we needed it, you could divert it elsewhere just for planning, we don't.
Sure. Much like the conversation you just had about streets and parks, you'd still have some discretion.
Okay. That's right. I don't know why I was thinking that EcoDevo Fund was in someone else's name, but it is actually, it's our account.
Yep.
Brain fart. We have five minutes before we need to be back.
So, yes, so I think, did we get almost as?
Were there any of those that you didn't want to see happen, or just in this general fund list, or change amounts, or?
You're still on that page, 24?
Yes, 24, yep.
Well, I don't know that other commissioners spoke to it, but I'm completely comfortable with the 20% target for the general fund. Mayor alluded to being conservative. I think having a little bit of cushion there is a wise idea.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Totally agree.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll, we'll need to double back, but we kind of touched on baseball and 1.5 million. Is there general consensus around that? I'm jumping ahead to the next slide, but I know that it's going to be ongoing community conversation about that one.
For me, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So we'll come back next week and kind of do a little bit more detail on the ARPA funding and see where we want to kind of direct that. And then we'll, we'll bring back the comprehensive fee schedule next week also.
Thank you very much. We'll adjourn until 4 o'clock.
Thank you.[1181.15]
Lee down with that.
This one here.
Oh, God. Absolutely.
Well, see, you know we've arrived when we all wear the same color each, each, each way.
All right, it looks like we're ready to go. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 14th, 2021 Salina City Commission meeting. First, I'd like to confirm with staff that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we'll proceed with roll call.
Mayor Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner Peck?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Thank you. Before we go into the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence, I did want to draw your attention to the fact that thanks to Commissioner Davis here, we all have flags at our places in acknowledgement that today is Flag Day and actually this week is nationally, it's National Flag Week. So, thank you to Commissioner Davis for recognizing that fact. And I would like to read the proclamation that was put out by the US government to celebrate Flag Day and National Flag Week before we do our Pledge of Allegiance so we can kind of keep that, keep in mind all of these, all of these reasons why we celebrate the flag. This is June 11th, 2021. "In the midst of a revolution, less than a year after declaring our independence, the Congress consecrated what would become an enduring emblem of American unity by adopting a national flag on June 14th, 1777. In the 244 years since, the United States has grown and changed across the generations, and our flag has changed in turn. The blue field of stars has been enlarged as our union has gained in size and strength. The 13 stripes, symbolizing the original 13 states, have held as constant as the bedrock values upon which our nation was first conceived, the very same values we still cherish and still reach for today. Since adoption of the Stars and Stripes, Americans and people around the world have continuously looked to our flag as a symbol of unity and liberty. Our flag has sailed around the globe, journeyed to the moon, and now to Mars. It has flown on fields of battle and marks the resting places of those who have given what President Lincoln called, quote, 'the last full measure of devotion,' unquote, for our country. Its prominence at civic landmarks and seats of public authority communicates the promise of democracy, that under this flag, the rule of law is supreme and the people reign. As we continue the sacred work of building a more perfect union together, let our flag serve as a reminder to us and to the world that America stands for and strives for the promise of freedom, justice, and equality for all. To commemorate the adoption of our flag, the Congress, by joint resolution approved August 3rd, 1949, designated June 14th of each year as Flag Day and requested that the President issue an annual proclamation calling for its observance and for the display of the flag of the United States on all federal government buildings. The Congress also requested, by joint resolution approved June 9th, 1966, that the President issue annually a proclamation designating the week in which June 14th occurs as National Flag Week and calling upon all citizens of the United States to display the flag during that week. So, at any rate, I want to again thank Commissioner Davis for bringing this to our attention and also to thank all servicemen and women, past and present, for serving with courage and compassion and ensuring that, that our flag still stands for democracy and freedom and hope across the world. Do you have anything to add, Commissioner Davis?
I think you said it quite well.
Okay. And with that, I would like all who are able to rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance and observe a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we don't have any awards and proclamations today, so that will take us to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for any member here physically or online to offer comments to the, to the City Commission. I would ask that you identify yourself and where you're from, and please limit your remarks to three minutes. And with that, is there anyone here who would like to speak?
Yeah, Norman Manasalina, Mayor. I would ask people to watch the movie We Were Soldiers with Mel Gibson, but you have to watch very carefully at the end of the movie what Lieutenant Colonel Hal Moore said about the flag.
All right, will do. Thank you, Mr. Manal.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Mike Matic, Gipsom, Kansas, and a employee of Salina Regional Health Center for past 30 years, here in support of Salina Media Connection. I understand you're going to be making some decisions regarding some of the funding for, for them and wanted you to know all the story behind that. I've actually been involved with either Access or Salina Media Connection from before even Salina Regional, so 30 years. But right now, as a, as a member of the Marketing Department of Salina Regional, we do a show through KSN out of Wichita called The Pulse on every Monday on Good Day Kansas. And we use an amazing facility right here in Salina, Kansas to tape, tape the show over at, over at Salina Media Connection. It's actually perfect for what we've got, good lighting, good backgrounds and stuff like that. When we switched over to KS, KSN three years ago and doing, doing The Pulse, we were at the time taping the show at our own locations and always a little different, always a little disruption or whatever. And it is so nice to have a, a facility to be able to do. We do rent, rent the, the facility from them while we, while we do it, so they are recouping some, some funding for it. And we just hate to see that go away. So, just wanted to kind of offer my support and the hospital's support there. Okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Matic. Appreciate it.
Hello?
Hi.
I'm Thad Beach and I'm 721 Morningside Drive, Salina, and I wanted to communicate my support for Salina Media Connection. I sent you all an email earlier that had some links to programs, community-based programs that, that I was involved with, and I hope you'll get it, take a look at that. But I just think it's a real valuable community resource that a lot of communities don't have. And there's amazing potential and possibilities for involvement and collaboration in the future. So, Salina Media Connection can help all of our missions by showcasing Salina as a visionary city that values and supports the arts, music, sports, its own unique history, heritage, and culture by providing these facilities and the staff for local people to produce their own programs. Most people couldn't afford the really high-tech equipment, but this gives everybody a voice and a chance to do it. That being said, a quality product takes a quality facility, knowledgeable staff. So, the future success of Salina Media Connection's ability to facilitate the creation of community program is tied to having a budget that takes into consideration being able to hire and retain top-notch employees that can see everyone's vision to fruition. So, I would hope that you would fund SMC to the fullest extent possible. And next year, everybody can look back and say, wow, I'm glad we supported that and say, that was a real surprise. Look at all the strides we've made. Everybody's been knocked back a little by COVID and getting things done. I know the programs I was involved in, it was pretty challenging to go down there during the height of the restrictions and film things. It was also hindered by the staff hours they had available. So, it does take a lot more time to produce quality programs than just if you shoot one camera and it's an interview with someone. Anytime you do editing, it's just so much more involved and time-consuming. And most video production companies would, it would be very expensive and prohibitive to get the same quality. So, I just hope you'll look into what's being produced and have a good outlook for the future and be able to fund it as much as possible because I think it's a very unique resource for a community to have, the deal you have with Cox Cable. So, good luck and I hope you'll support them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beach. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak?
She wants to go.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do the virtual folks next. We'll do the people that are here first. Yes, yeah.
Hi, my name is Isaiah Markot. I live at 338 West Claflin, Salina, Kansas, here in town, obviously. And I'm here to support Salina Media Connections as well, too. For the past seven years, if not maybe a few more, more months on top of that, I volunteered at Salina Media Connections. When I had actually no outlet as a youngster, because I started when I was like 12 years old, I had no gear, none of that. I was extremely fascinated to make movies at the time. And Salina Media Connections, where my parents couldn't help fund my projects, has always been there, like every time, to help me out with that. And in a way, it's been an incredible, incredible educational experience for me. It was pretty much like the youngsters' film school. I learned a lot. Like, I learned everything I needed about codex, about filmmaking, editing, how to work cameras, everything. Staff was extremely supportive. It was brilliant, like great. But to get specifically into things, it's, it's helped me make as many projects that I've been able to do to where it's gotten me on my own feet. Without them, I really don't know how far back I probably would have become on, as a filmmaker, as an artist. So, a little bit more, I guess, about me to give you some better context. I, I'm an independent filmmaker and without the knowledge that I've gained from them, I wouldn't have made it where I am. I feel like I'm repeating myself, but let's get to the point. One thing that I've noticed about just even talking about Access TV to anybody was the incredible fascination amongst young kids myself in it. They were all like, oh, wow, you work at a TV station? I'm like, well, I don't, I don't work with a TV station. I volunteer at a TV station. And they're like, that's even better. Is that something that I have to pay for? And it's like, not quite. I mean, you really like, other than like the 25-year subscription that you have to pay, which is like really nothing in the scheme of things, you can just volunteer right up and, and get started with a TV station. And out of consequence, I've gotten a lot of young people, myself, interested in that whole context. Now, I think the trouble, unfortunately, is just getting the word out about it. Nobody knows about it. And it fascinates me. And if anything, I think it needs help with that. I think that the more people who are actually like knew about the fact that there's actually just a TV station that they can just straight-up volunteer with, the more you'd gain interest. I think that's really its trouble. But a lot of young kids, I've gotten lots of friends of mine volunteer with the River Festival when that was still going and that was going strong. I've made tons of TV shows with some good friends of mine. We made some comedy sketches. We went out and did like stuff on our own using their own gear. I've made about, probably up to two feature films and several short films, several, the longest being 12 minutes and right down to like four-minute short films with these guys. And they've taught me as much as I can learn about filmmaking and it's great. Don't lose it. That's all I'm saying. Time's up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Markot. Anyone else who would like to speak here in person? And then we will turn to the virtual participants. All right, I see Ms. Meyer, can we, go ahead, Ms. Meyer, you should be unmuted.
Yes, I am. I want to support what the previous speakers were saying about Salina Media. It is so important in my life and in the life of our community. And I agree, there needs to be more information out about it. And I like to, to have my tax money spent in a healthy, progressive way. And I do feel like the Salina Media is, is the place that we, that I would want some of my tax money to go. I know some of the people there, the dedicated volunteers and such, please, 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 think twice before you do whatever we're concerned about here and continue supporting the Salina Media and spending my tax money and other tax money on Salina Media. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Ms. Gutierrez, can we unmute her?
Mayor and City Commissioners and residents, hi, I'm Brittany Gutierrez with the Salina Area United Way. And at the Salina Area United Way, we fight for the health, education, and financial stability of all people. And doing work in the areas of education, financial stability, and health, we've had the opportunity through Salina Media Connection, Strictly Salina, to interview nonprofits. So, I get to represent a voice of Salina and have every month a couple of different interviews to different nonprofits. And then that information is shared out in the community. And it's shared out through YouTube. People can send it through their email, through their links, as well as on the Salina Media Connection on their TV channel. And I just wanted to give that kind of report a highlight. If you think that we're doing, you know, 24 last year and 24 this year, I've had the opportunity to be the Strictly Salina host for a couple of years now. But that is another example of information in the community going out in a very structured way. And we always start with, what's your why? So, when you think about any nonprofit, anyone that's passionate and, and living through that passionate, what's your why? We've had the opportunity to do that. And I wanted to share that as kind of a report to the commission of what we're doing over at the Salina Media Connection. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez. Any, any other participants online that you can see? Okay, thank you. All right. Thanks, everyone, for your, your comments and support of Salina Media Connection. I know we all appreciate hearing those. And I think that we're going to look forward to receiving some kind of a proposal. Are we going to receive a proposal from Salina Media Connection before the contract expires?
Mr. Wood.
Yeah, okay, great. All right. Thank you, Ms. Cox. All right, that will take us. We don't have any public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so that takes us to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of June 7, 2021. And 6.2, authorize the city manager to execute a Smoky Hill River Festival sound provider agreement.
Are there any items that a commissioner would like to take off the consent agenda? And if there's not, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve consent agenda items 6.1 and 6.2.
Mayor, I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, items 6.1 and 6.2. Before we, we vote, can we go ahead and just do a voice vote? Or do we have participants via phone that would necessitate our continuing to do a roll call?
No, we don't have anybody by phone.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, that takes us to administration.
7.1, approve resolution number 21-7966, authorizing the city manager to sign a master equity lease agreement and service agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management.
Mr. Wood.
Mayor, Commissioners, Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. A couple of weeks ago, we had a study, study session where we talked about the Enterprise Fleet Management Program. It's a program that can help us to replace our entire fleet of vehicles that are one ton and below. It's a lease program. Basically, they use the, the ability of the city's, the city's ability to purchase vehicles with that city discount. And then they maximize resale of those vehicles at a later date, put them on, put the vehicles on a lease program. So, some vehicles will be on a short-term lease and some on a little bit longer-term lease, but it will allow us to replace our entire fleet over a five-year timeframe. Lots of benefits to this. There's some cost savings, newer vehicle fleet, reduced maintenance for those vehicles, reduced fuel costs. It'll allow us to kind of get the right vehicles for the right, that we need to do the job that we want to do and also increase our capacity to use funds to buy other vehicles and equipment outside of the fleet maintenance program. Typically, the city's spending about $300,000 on this, these vehicles annually. We will still be setting that, that fund, those funds aside to spend money on these vehicles. And we also plan to set some money into an account, fleet maintenance account, about a million dollars that we discussed in the study session, to kind of seed that account as we get forward, moving. We plan to replace about 55 vehicles in the next year. And then over the next three or four years, we'll replace all of our 150 vehicles. So, this resolution, all it does is just authorize us to take the next step, sign the agreement with Enterprise. Ken Olson is a representative from Enterprise Fleet Management. He's here if you have any questions for him, and I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
All right, any questions for Mr. Wood or Mr. Olson?
I had just a couple that I was trying to think back on. And forgive me if I overlooked this, but in terms of vehicle condition, when you get ready to cycle those through for the city, and we have a F-150 that is completely beat up, a tree trunk fell on it, whatever. I know that with the open lease agreement, it's certainly not as restrictive, but can you kind of walk me through that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, to start there, there's no penalties for wear and tear. In addition to that, there's no penalties for over mileage or early termination as well. It's all based around the equity. So, if we have a vehicle that's three years old and we expect it to get $25,000 for that vehicle, well, there's going to be significant, some less equity that's coming back to the city if the vehicle's significantly beat up. We often find that through implementing the newer, more efficient fleet of vehicles and getting out sooner, a lot of times the vehicles and the governments may stay in a better condition than as we see them today when we're running them out 20, 25 years. But there's no penalties for that wear and tear.
Okay.
Any major issue, we also have insurance. So, we will, and if a tree falls on it, I mean, a big issue, we're going to have to take care of that like we would anything else. So, you may see some vehicles in our fleet right now that, that may have a, you know, a front bumper that's caved in or something like that that we just didn't fix because we didn't think it was worth it. We will have to fix those things. I mean, we will anticipate we're going to probably fix more than what we might have in the past. So, insurance, it will go up a little bit. We've run all those numbers, but it's not, not anything significant. So.
Then all, all, I was trying to think, all warranty work would be done through local dealerships. There's no chance of, do we still have all ISE-certified mechanics at the central garage? Okay, three, okay. Is there any chance of any of that work going through the central garage? Or that probably wouldn't be a...
That, that would fall into an internal conversation. Typically, we outsource that to the local dealerships and pass that all through as it's covered, as the vehicles are primarily all covered under warranty.
Okay. I don't think I had any other questions.
Just to follow up to that question, if I could, so the routine maintenance, I want to go as base as an oil change, but do you supervise or do you make sure that this is all being done? Or is all that still left to our maintenance department?
Yes, that is all going to stay internal at this time. We do have programs that we can cover the preventative, non-preventative, brakes, tires, everything. But with the current situation that the city has with the garage, we're going to keep that all internal.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Are there any questions or comments from the public? I don't see anyone online with their hand raised, so I will bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 21-7966, authorizing the city manager to sign a master equity lease agreement and service agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 21-7966. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, approve resolution number 21-7964 relating to a special improvement district for water, sanitary sewer, street, and drainage improvements in Wheatland Valley Edition and authorize the city manager to execute an improvement district development agreement between the City of Salina and Wheatland Development Company, Inc.
Mr. Sack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. This project is, been a long time coming for Mr. Daley. He's got some property on the east side of Markley here, shown by this map, kind of a section of property here just south of the East Crawford Rec area, the ballfield there, just north of the Magnolia Hills subdivision down here. So, he's connecting a piece of property there to, for residential development. This first phase he's requesting is for 29 lots. As you can see, it's got 77 total when you build it all out, but those are the first 29 that he's, that he's requesting to, to do infrastructure financing for. His started in 2018 when he'd got his plat approved. And then the, the commission approved the developer staff to, to do the petition of feasibility report. So, it started quite a while back, but with the coronavirus and pandemic, Mr. Daley wasn't interested in pursuing it much further at that point. But, and he still had some plans and still working on the plans to bring them forward. And in the last few months, it's definitely become a hot topic in Salina to, we need residential housing. And so, he feels like this is the right time. One of the things to note with this subdivision is that it is, does have the perimeter road being Markley Road. It is, you know, Markley Road is paved and it's, it meets the, the interim road road standards, and one of the things to, to make sure, I guess, to make it match the interim road standards, is to put in a sidewalk on one side. So that's really the only thing that'll have to really happen to Markley Road, and there is currently out there a trail along this side from the, from the park along the east side of Markley, so they'll be able to pave that with a sidewalk to, to match the interim road, street standards for Markley. That was dealt with as well in 2019, with the larger Markley and Holmes and whole benefit district area out there for the perimeter roads. But before you today is just, is the petition and feasibility report for 27, or, I'm sorry, 29 lots, and the lots are currently estimated for assessments at 38,405.55 a piece, which is, I don't know if it's not high, not low, I guess you'd say, it seems like that's been, the, the last few have been similar to that, I guess, and I guess I would stand for, for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. And just to clarify, we did receive an updated agenda item for 7.2, and the only difference between what was originally posted in the packet and what, and the updated version is the, the actual final numbers for the, for the cost of the project, is that correct?
Correct. The fiscal note, yeah, we had some older numbers there. Mr. Daley has got some contractor numbers, and those were updated over time, and for some reason, they were not updated on the blue sheet, but they are on every other document in the thing, so it's, it's a lot of things to keep track of, and it was a lot of documents, but we haven't, we believe right on all of the three attachments, so at least the math adds up, just not correct on the blue sheet.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Stack?
I don't believe I have one for Mr. Stack, but if the developers here, it would be, kind of like to hear what type of homes are going to be built on this, if we could.
Mr. Daley is here for, for questions?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor Hodges. I, he went over some of the things on my notes here, so I'll just kind of review them quickly here. As he mentions, the 77 lot development on Markley, Markley Road, and there's 29 lots in the first phase, which is what we're looking at here tonight. The covenants for this development will list the minimum home size at 1,250 square feet, and that was intentional to try to target a mid-price range home. Typically, what I'm seeing throughout the marketplace presently in Salina is high, high-end home lots, there's a lot of selection available for the higher-end homes, but there's little or no selection available for a 1,250-square-foot home. So we're targeting that market, so we're not competing, all the developers aren't competing against each other, and we can have a selection of new constructions in all price ranges for the buyers in our marketplace that I hear we're going to have coming soon. Told we need 1,000 new houses in a four or five-year period here. We've not built that many homes per year since I've been building, I've been a residential contractor in Salina for 40 years, and we might see 100 to 110 homes, it seemed like at the most, per year, even 10 years ago. So I, I, I think we've got a lot of work to do ahead of us, and we're going to need some lots, and I think this, this development with its location and its positive amenities that are structured very close to it, like the Salina Municipal Golf Course and the East Croc, Crawford Rec area, which is now, I believe, the Berkeley Family Rec Area. We have Barkley Park, which is a well-attended dog park up there, we take our dog there a lot, and a lot of people there, and, and also the, the old Elks Golf Course, which is, I forget the name sometimes, Great Life Golf Course and Fitness Center is close. It's also a readily-available location for travel to all sections of Salina, the south section, the central section, and the north section via Markley Road and Crawford and Magnolia. Those roads get people where they're going quickly from this location, and then the 10-foot sidewalk that Mr. Stack mentioned, I think will be another positive amenity, so people in these neighborhoods can have a place to walk and exercise, and go up to, to the amenities I just mentioned. Anyway, I, I've built homes here for 40 years, and I think this, this is a positive thing for Salina right now, and that's why I'm here tonight. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Will these be on slab, or will they have basement or a combination?
They will be combination, they can build slab-on-grade or basement homes, as long as the minimum ground floor square footage is 1,250 square feet, which I think puts these homes a tier lower than the ones next to it at Magnolia Hills. I believe those homes are probably over 300,000 or 350, even some of them, and I think we need mid-price range product in this market, and I think this offers the location for it.
And one other question, these lots will be open to all builders?
Yes, sir. Good point, I had that on my list here. But they will be available to all builders or all individuals, any party's interested in purchasing a lot from Wheatland Development Company can do so.
How many total acres, I'm sorry?
This phase, sir, is 31 acres, and it's 77 lots. I also have the adjacent, or the connecting 69 acres to the east of it, so there's a lot of room for expansion, if this fills quickly, that we can put some of those 1,000 homes we need out there. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Daley? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here today. Are there any members of the public that have questions or would like to comment on this item? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mayor, move, we approve resolution number 21-7964.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 21-7964. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for your time. All right, item 7.3.
Item 7.3, approve resolution number 21-7957, relating to an establishment of a special improvement district for trail improvements along the east side of Markley Road, required as a condition of the Magnolia Hills Estates Edition Number Two plat approval, and authorize the city manager to execute an improvement district development agreement between the City of Salina and Magnolia Hills Estates, Inc.
Mr. Stack.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Jacob, could you put up the next third page, if you don't mind? There we go, yep, that's good, thank you. All right, this is a development that's just south of the one we just talked about. The Magnolia Hills original subdivision here, Magnolia Hills Estates, has been, been there since the mid-2000s, and has quite a bit of homes, pretty much, I think it's, it's actually full, I believe, so that, that one's full. Kelly Dunn and Stan Byquist and their group with James Markle. Phase one is substantially complete here to the east of the original Magnolia Hills Estates. They've completed all, most of the infrastructure to start building houses there, we've had, one of the lots is actually sold. They still have a little bit to do on a detention pond, and one of the requirements for the plat and for the development was a sidewalk on Magn, uh, Markley as well. So at the time, we didn't, Kelly, the developers and us, we didn't think about really maybe how to put that in the, in the petition feasibility originally. The previous project we just talked about with Mr. Daley, it's, it's already in there, and we put it in there, but this one, we did not get it in there at the time. The idea was, we would partner with the developers in both of these to make it a 10-foot sidewalk, so they were responsible for five, and we'd do the other, other five. In the case, in this case, Kelly Dunn would like to have his contractor that's been working on this construct that, and so, and with that, we need an improvement district development agreement for him to do that, and for us, the city to then reimburse the amount of proportionate share for that sidewalk. This one's a little trickier, because there's an existing subdivision that's, that's been there since the mid-2000s, so there's quite a few lots there, and many, many lots that bond council and staff didn't believe that they, you know, there's, wasn't part of the original plat to construct a sidewalk on, on Markley at that time, so the city's share would have to eat that cost, basically. And then proportionate share for these two phases, phase one and two, the idea with these two phases is they benefit from Markley, and anything further east, once they, once they do the rest of the subdivision to the east over to Holmes, and that would benefit Holmes, so the sidewalk would, would be constructed on Holmes when they, when they plat this out. But for these two phases, phase one and two, those lots would benefit from Markley, and so they would get assessed the proportionate share for the sidewalk on Markley, and then in that case, the city would cover the extra five feet to make it a 10-foot sidewalk. So when the math all adds up, it's quite, it's a fairly small assessment, quite a larger, large cost for the city, but it is part of our, kind of our trail system, we've been putting in 10-foot trails for the last probably 10, 15 years or so approximately, and this trail actually has been graded, and, and some rock was put down a few years ago with some of our trail funds to at least get the, kind of the location of where the sidewalk should be, or where the trail should be, and it's been, it's pretty highly used thus far to get this subdivision, and anyone else who wants to traverse here to the park, to Barkley Park, to East Crawford, it's been a really nice sidewalk, but it's, or a trail, I should say, the trail is, like any other trail, has some challenges with keeping it graded, and the rock, and, and the washouts periodically with rain, so it, it'll be really nice to get this trail paved with a 10-foot walk, so we think it'll be a great amenity. Proportionate share for phase one and two here is just around $600 per lot, so it's not a, a monster share for those, each of those properties to cover, and since they're not even quite done yet with the infrastructure, those assessments haven't actually been finalized, so, you know, there's a chance that it'll be about, you know, not, not much more than was originally in there anyway, and we don't know exactly for sure what the final costs are, so that'll, that'll be determined later, once all this is done. So that's really all I have on that, I guess. Questions? Any further questions, I guess?
That trail, the, the city put in the existing trail, and that was only, wasn't that just like two years ago?
I was thinking 2019, so yeah, I guess that's, that's really not that long ago. June of 19, fall of 19, yeah, that's a couple of years ago, you're right.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So all of that, I mean, it kind of curves around, that's essentially the route of the sidewalk?
Correct.
And that's all just going to be torn right back up, and can we, I guess, recover?
No, you know, it's, we will recover what we can, but it's really, a really, it's a good base for the concrete. So a lot of it, to the north of Stone Post, the concrete's going to go around on top of it, so it won't be wasted at all. The southern portion is not to the right grade, from Brookstone, or Brookfield to Stone Post, so it'll have to be cut out somewhat, but we need a, we need the rock base for, for a sidewalk anyway, so we'll have to regrade that and put it back down, and then take whatever's excess. We can use it elsewhere, there's a little bit of cooperation with our guys and the contractor to also go to, we have to go a little further south than is currently there, so we have to go all the way down to the, oh, the southern end of the subdivision, which is really the pond, so it's quite a ways to the south. Of course, it'll just dead end there, but at least it's sidewalks to nowhere, go to sidewalks to somewhere eventually, so it'll, it'll be, eventually be connected, but that's, we feel like we'll use the rock in, in a good, good, good spot, just maybe, some of it may have to get wasted in that southern portion. Other questions?
Any further questions for Mr. Stack?
I just have a question about maybe how we could handle this differently, or how other communities were, would handle this, because it's just strange that we have this, those, all these homes between Magnolia Hills Estates Edition Number Two and Markley Road that don't get assessed.
Right.
And I don't believe there's anything we can do now, but how would we handle that in the future, so that something like, if I own a home in Magnolia Hills Estates, granted, I'm not excited to have something new placed on my, my tax roll, but it just seems awkward, we're jumping all those homes to Magnolia Hills Two, and tax, and they're getting hit with an assessment for a sidewalk that they have to go through numerous homes to get to. How, how do other communities, or how would we handle that, so that something like that wouldn't happen again?
Well, and I'll try to tackle that, and my answer may be overly frank, but we would have required the sidewalk as a plat condition of those phases of the subdivision. We, and we kind of cha, made a policy change, or at least how we applied ourselves when the subsequent phases came up for approval, and so by imposing the sidewalk requirement, when we did on the phases that we did, we were picking up in the middle of that development. You know, the other alternative would have been not to impose that requirement at all, to continue to either leave the, the trail there as is, or fully funded at city expense, but as we went through that perimeter road conversation, and identified, as, as Mr. Stack mentioned, the, the interim street standards, that's when the, the sidewalk conversation kind of crystallized, and that's why that, the timing was such that it got imposed on the later phases.
Yep, and we have taken the steps to make sure this doesn't happen on the eastern half, that would benefit Holmes Road, correct?
Correct. Yes, the, the perimeter street standards that, that we adopted, go into greater detail about everything from storm drainage to sidewalks and connectivity, and, and you may recall that we, we recognized we needed an interim street standard, that, you know, if you have a initial development, well, I should back up, when, when you think about benefit districts, it is an entire area of benefit, and when you talk about a road, it's both sides of the road, so you could have an individual subdivision interested in developing, but they're, they don't represent 100% of the benefit district, it'll pick up the other side of the road and beyond, so as part of our perimeter street standards, we developed an interim road standard, recognizing we kind of needed to incrementally find a way to facilitate that first phase of development, and then improve the road to the full standard as development continued. So sidewalks are now in that, that interim street standard, so that as we review the plans, and we put the benefit districts together, it, it will be part of the requirements. Previously, that wasn't necessarily the case.
And I guess my second question would be, and you kind of said it, the sidewalk to nowhere, would it be beneficial, and I know it'd probably be at the city's cost, to take that sidewalk all the way to Magnolia Road? It just seems kind of awkward that it just ends there. So if I'm, if I'm riding a bike up Magnolia Road, and I get to Markley, I have to, I'm not sure where I can even get on that sidewalk until I get up to the, to the street, that first intersection.
One thing for sure, you'd, you'd have to U-turn at Magnolia, because there's no place to ride, and, well, if people ride on Magnolia, but I wouldn't.
I used to, I don't anymore.
Yeah, I think the, probably the next point of connectivity probably runs all the way back Magnolia and over the bridge, which that's a challenge in and of itself, in terms of adding width to that bridge for pedestrian purposes, so, and I think Commissioner Davis is right, it, there's going to be a dead end somewhere along the way.
Somewhere, I guess, yeah, yes.
Yeah, and lot wa, or the lot further through the south, between Magnolia and the end of this subdivision, is not developed, I'm not sure it's platted yet either, I think they'll have the requirement.
Is that, that's commercial, too?
It is, and so they'll have the requirement to construct half of the sidewalk, or five, five-foot sidewalk at that time, so it would be, at some point, we'll at least get a portion of it paid for by the development, if, if we wait. But as you know, we put in a lot of 10-foot sidewalks along parts of town that we've just paid for with city funds, or KDOT funds, or whatever, so it's definitely up to you guys, but we, it's like eventually it'll connect, but this one, it could be a while, with, like you said, Magnolia Road, challenges getting, getting across there and around there.
If there were an opportunity for a trailhead, that might be, you know, be more appealing, but with it being private property on all quadrants, there's not really that opportunity.
Any other questions? I just, if not, I had one. How did we land on the city-at-large share being 83.9%? share being 83.9%?
Well, it's a complex formula here. Let me see if I can get to it. It's in the, in the petition feasibility report, basically, there's, if you go to page eight of the petition feasibility report, petition 4411, we, Wayne Nelson is here. Wayne worked a lot on this. And he footnoted basically a one and a two there on our petition feasibility report so we could understand it ourselves, which is helpful for me because I had to ask him that same question Thursday.
I got, okay, I gotcha. Yeah, I see, okay.
So, but I can, it's basically, you know, half of the total cost for the city at-large two, which is of course that, the large, half of the, how does it work? Number one is for the existing subdivision, and number two is for half of the, the one we're talking about now, I guess.
Yeah, well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but just the fact that we are, the requirement of the developer is five feet. We want it to be a hike bike trail at 10 feet. So there's 50% right off the top.
Right, right. I get, yeah, I get the 50% right on top.
Then you end up with the city at-large portion of the existing developed part of Magnolia Hills that we didn't impose a plat requirement of a sidewalk on those homes. So we missed the opportunity to put it in their specials. So then it's a, an allocation of all those development, developed lots, and then the proportion of the newly proposed lots that had the sidewalk requirement imposed on them. So when you put the 50% together and then the, the cost allocation of the other 50%, that leaves us with the bulk of it.
Yeah, there's 95 lots in the existing Magnolia Hills Estates subdivision, and then 45 in this next, next group that were being assessed.
Thank you.
Hope that answers your question.
It does. I think it goes back to what Commissioner Hoppeck mentioned earlier about, you know, ensuring that, you know, you know, what we do so this doesn't split out this way in the future.
Yeah, it seems like the last five years of dealing with the perimeter roads policy, it's now in there. And then it's also, in this area, actually, there are benefit districts set up for it, too. So it's, took a long time to get there, but we now have that, at least as a requirement to have a sidewalk as a part of the development, every time there's a plat now, basically.
Thank you. If there aren't any further questions for Mr. Stack, I'll open it up to members of the public. Anyone have a question or a comment on this item? I don't see any takers online either, so I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mayor, move approval of resolution number 21-7957. Second?
We have a motion to approve resolution number 21-7957. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. All right, we don't have any, I have to get back to my, my agenda here. We don't have any development business. Is there any other business that a commissioner would like to bring up this afternoon? All right, then if not, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll see you back here on the 21st.